Thirty minutes.
Reporting in progress.
The board met. The board met an executive session thirty minutes before this evening's meeting. And we are a full board this evening. Do we have any citizens comments to the board on agenda items?
We do not.
All right, on to the principles. Eric, you look eager. Let's hear it.
Start it up down here. Oh, that's right. Um, so we'll start off just talking about Veterans Day at Lindtown. We've always done different, uh, different teachers. We've kind of let it up to them. Um, how they would like to honor Veterans Day and celebrate Veterans Day. Um, this year, we thought, let's take it schoolwide. Um, there's always been an interest of that. And this year is like, let's, we're going for it. Um, so it was pretty awesome. We had two teachers really step up, one for fourth, one for fifth to, accept the RSVPs from different, um, honored guests that we invited. We opened it up to any students. If they had family members, friends, neighbors that were veterans, they were invited in to come into Lindtown. Uh, we provided lunch along with PSA, helping offset the costs for the veterans. Um, the staff also brought in items for those veterans. Um, we had them eat lunch with the students. Mrs. Ischeide had students play taps at the beginning of each lunch, which was awesome. Um, that was a thing that they kept like real quiet. They wanted that to be a surprise. Um, and the week leading up to it, the students wrote cards and thank you notes to veterans, um, in red, white and blue. And then we put them together in the hallway to make a flag. Um, we had a balloon arch. They had decorations throughout the whole hallway. Um, and then the veterans after lunch, they were invited back into classrooms. Um, for a little bit of question and answer. So it was fun hearing, um, fun and kind of nerve wracking at the same time. Like, what are they gonna ask these guys? Um, definitely questions like, did you get injured? How did you get injured? Um, but it was just really cool to see. And we had a lot of positive feedback from the veterans, um, from the students. There were aunts, uncles, grandparents, um, neighbors. Um, we also then, in any of the, um, students that had family members or friends that were veterans, they could send in pictures. And we posted those on the hallway, um, and have a big display area. And it was really cool even to see the veterans walking by and just reading all of those. Um, and the students, um, when they're coming in, in the morning, they're stopping and reading through, um, to see that. So it was really cool thing. Um, I think a new tradition at Lindtown. Um, it was so well received and, um, just a great celebration. It was, it was really nice that it worked out that way. Um, and then keeping with the busy Veterans Day, that evening, we had a second grade concert, um, at Kelly. Um, and again, it was just an awesome thing because they could incorporate some songs. They ended with a big grand finale of all of second grade singing to the veterans. Um, that's always a fun time. It's, it's amazing to me every time how much that means to the kids. You see them back in the classrooms as we're trying to organize them tallest to shortest by homeroom. Um, they're coming in in tuxes, bow ties, like brand new dresses, fancy shoes. Um, and they are so excited and walking out, they're high fiving us and the teachers all come in to help out. And we're like explaining to them, like, that's butterflies you're feeling. It's an okay thing. They think they're getting sick. Um, then they get out there and everybody's just waving to each other. Um, so just another awesome thing. Um, it's really fun to see that every time. And Kelly Gym, um, if you've never had a child there, is always standing room only. Um, family and friends all over there. Um, just a really cool environment for our kids and a way to celebrate all of their hard work. Um, then the last thing I wanted to share, um, just a little thing, and it's one example of everybody here could give so many examples of little things that, just every member of our district and, and even our bus company, the way they go above and beyond for our students. Um, so we had a little kindergartner that is absolutely terrified of buses. Um, which as we were thinking, like coming into Dragon Dash and stuff like, okay, we are now going to Pauling. We're gonna have to ride a bus. How's this gonna work? Um, so we're brainstorming. We're working with him in so many different ways. Um, we talked to the one bus driver and she said, I'll just come back then. Like after I do my run, let me come back. I'll park the bus. He can touch it. He can step on it. If he wants to ride on it, he can. Um, and she came back for like forty-five minutes and just worked with him, talked with him. She had a little toy bus that she had on her dash. She gave it to him to play with. Um, it took probably about thirty, thirty-five minutes before he would even step on it when it was off. Cause he just, he was afraid it was gonna come on. It would be loud. Um, and she walked with him on the bus and just went so far above and beyond. It was just awesome to see, um, that experience. And he ended up making it over to the Dragon Dash, um, which was even better. Um, had the time of his life there. So it was just really cool to see. And it's something that I think we get to see every day that we don't always get to share. Um, so just wanted to take the opportunity to thank, um, Adam Transportation for all they've done for us and just that bus driver going above and beyond.
So I'm gonna cover two things, uh, from Lindtown as I spend more of my week there. So you probably heard about the penny drive and didn't get to witness the kids coming in with heavy bags of pennies or like totes and cans. And, um, the goal was five hundred dollars and, um, our fourth and fifth graders raised nearly two thousand dollars. Um, and it was to support the military share. And so the really great thing about it, Eric and I were talking, you know, is the fact that this is going to benefit people in our community, veterans in our community. And, and it's, it means a lot more to the kids when they know that it's people that live around them that they're helping, especially at this time, um, in our current state affair. Um, intervention, we launched our intervention after months of working on organization research. Um, setting up a lot of meetings with, uh, it was a joint effort. We really wanted to thank, um, Hannah, Arian Frake and Michelle Rosenberg for their part in this because it took a team to come up with a timeframe for implementing it and giving our teachers not only the resources, but the training that they needed in order to feel that they were successful. You know, not everyone's a reading specialist and a lot of our groups are focused in the area of reading. So we were able to take the first marking period to set up morning meetings and make them feel comfortable, provide them with the training that they needed to address that targeted group. Um, and you know, the, the beautiful thing that we know will be able to share with you down the road is that every child is getting exactly what they need. Um, and their, their weakest area is going to be addressed and hit every day for that half an hour. So we're excited to see the growth that they're going to make. And, um, we know there'll be some adjustments and you know, maybe some like growing pains with, they, they were apprehensive about how are we sending the kids out to the hall? And how are they gonna get to this room or that room safely? And they've done wonderful. And the teachers just come out in the hall and send them to their locations and they take everything with them. Um, some of the groups that I've been in working with, the kids have just really fallen into a routine. They know what to expect. Um, and they've been really, um, respectful with the teacher that they've never had before. Um, so we're really excited to see where this is gonna go for our students, just like Kelly has already seen wonderful growth, um, in several areas. We have some math groups. Some of the kids have really, um, high comprehension scores and don't need fluency decoding. And so they're working with, um, Cindy Kostick with math intervention because that's their area of need. So, um, it's really exciting. Uh, we're looking forward to another marking period or two of it and to be able to share some results with you. You're up.
Thank you. I, it's hard to follow Kaylee and eager Eric down there, but, um, we have our middle school fall play starting tomorrow night. Uh, almost sixty students will perform, uh, or help perform rotten apples. Um, it's a comedy. There are fairy tale heroes. There are villains. The really cool thing is three different performances Friday, seven thirty, Saturday, one P M, Saturday, seven thirty, three different endings. So if you ever needed a reason to go to all three showings, now is your reason. So rush back from the, but not too fast from the state championship soccer game to be there Friday at seven thirty. And then again, Saturday at one, and why not stay till seven thirty Saturday night? So really excited to see that performance and the kids have been working extremely hard, um, in all different roles to, to make it happen. Last year, Mr. Lipavetsky, our business teacher held his B C I T career fair. So half of our seventh graders have that class during the first semester. The other half have it second semester and will have the career fair there. But it was another really successful event for him and for our students. We had just about twenty different individuals volunteer their time. Our students got to go around interview. There were some set questions, but they're able to ask them some different things as well about levels of training. What do you like about your role? Would you do it again if you were, went back in time and you were my age? And there was PhDs, PDs, MDs, FDs, um, Bureau of Forestry, Buffalo Valley Police, Geisinger, Playworld, Bucknell National Guard. So it was really well represented for a lot of different roles that take a lot of different training, expertise and, um, able to hit on a lot of different interests for our students. So it's another successful career fair and we look forward to the spring.
Thanks. Um, so of course, the end of the marking period, first marking period was the end of October. So the beginning of November started with some parent teacher conferences. So those very busy time at the middle school in the after hours, uh, last week. Um, they were all successful, went well, including our seventh graders who do their traditional student led conference, uh, which forces them to really reflect themselves. And then under the guidance of their teacher, report out to their parents, uh, how they did the first marking period. Um, in addition to Lindtown kicking off some tiered interventions, we are this week and next week at the middle school. Um, so our MTSS model, we have some math and E L A groups beginning this week and next week. Um, in addition to that, we have some behavioral interventions going on. Um, I'm really excited about Mr. Sello, our emotional support teacher and I, uh, put together, um, an S E L group of sixth graders, some sixth graders to work on some social emotional learning, work on some peer conflict, um, how to, you know, understand empathy. Um, and so that kicks off for at least a fifteen week program every Monday. We'll be doing that during midday. Super excited about that group, uh, with Mr. Sello. Um, our sixth graders are super busy, uh, the next few weeks, um, as tomorrow they have a field trip to Bucknell for their dream learn pitch. That's actually their second dream learn pitch, um, field trip that they'll have. Um, the other thing they have going on next week is a P P N L energy conservation presentation. So P P N L comes in and does a presentation about um, energy conservation, but they also usually typically get to take home a little box of things that their parents can use around the house. So light bulbs, um, or even the shower, change the shower head, right, to, to save on water. So that's exciting for them. And then the last thing before, um, as elementary will be doing this as well, they'll be going to Bucknell for their educational day to watch the girls' basketball play. That'll be the day before Thanksgiving. So our sixth graders have a busy few weeks before Thanksgiving break. I do that.
Good evening, everybody. Um, first things first, uh, we had a couple of events, uh, taking place last week. So fall play, uh, we had at the high school last week, the students who participated did a wonderful job. Um, from the performers, stage crew, tech, uh, it was really enjoyable. Um, I'm certainly happy. I read up on a little Shakespeare before I went to give me some of the background. Uh, but Josh Wilkinson and his team did a great job with getting those kiddos prepared for, uh, a tough Shakespeare play. Um, one other piece of information I want to share is some data. So we did get the AP information, uh, data scores from last year. We did get, uh, the recipients of who received an AP capstone diploma. So just to highlight, uh, what, what it takes to earn that achievement. Uh, so you have to take AP seminar, AP research. Uh, you need to earn a three or higher on those exams. And then you need to, uh, take four additional AP exams and earn a three or higher. So we had ten students who did earn the AP capstone diploma, uh, last school year. So that was over, um, basically starting in their sophomore year, they started those endeavors. Uh, and then from AP caps, uh, from AP information, I gave a bunch of different, you know, recognition to students specifically who just recently graduated or the class of twenty twenty-six. Uh, so if you've taken like three AP exams and scored a three or higher, you get some recognition and it continues to move up, uh, from there. So we had seventy-five total students across, uh, those two grades receive some sort of AP recognition for having taken three AP, uh, exams and scoring a three or higher. So very, very impressive, uh, by our students. It showcases the work that they've put in, uh, to their coursework. Uh, it showcases the, um, efforts from the teachers as well, uh, to make sure that they're getting those kiddos ready for the AP exam. A couple of interesting highlights as well. So there was one student who took eight AP exam and scored a five on every single one of them. So, uh, you cannot do any better, uh, on that. And then we have one kiddo currently, uh, who has taken five AP exams and has scored a five on all of them. So very impressive, um, achievement by those students. And then lastly, uh, we have a pretty big day tomorrow. So the scholastic scrimmage team travels to, back to Pittston. So we had a huge win, uh, versus Delaware Valley, who has been a perennial power. So we competed against them on Wednesday, that was yesterday. Uh, so we're going back to Pittston and we'll face Berwick, who is, uh, top contender as well. So students are looking forward to that competition. Uh, so that will be through the W V I A, uh, scholastic scrimmage. So you'll see those air, um, as they come on to the, the cable channels that still exist out there.
Um, I will change, uh, directions just a little bit, um, for a monthly like cellphone data update. Um, since the beginning of the year, there's been sixteen, like situations that have come to the office. Only two of those, well, I'm sorry, eighteen total. Two were like level two infractions, only two, sorry. Let me rewind a little bit. Let's just start that over. Sixteen are level two infractions. So kids then phone stays in the office for three days. Only two of them, um, were level three infractions. So of those sixteen, only, uh, there were only two of those violations or two of the kids in those violations went on for a third violation. Um, I'm not sure how the best way to say that, but, um, in the spirit of not just repeating it over and over again and hoping for a better result, I'll leave it right there. Um, also today we did the, uh, the representative from Lackawanna College came down to help kids get, uh, registered for the dual enrollment opportunity. Uh, I counted about twenty kids in there, um, in the communications. However, we also provided the link to register. So some families may have done that at home. Um, I don't have that full list yet, but when we have that list, we can report that back as well. Uh, and then the final update is, I don't know if anybody heard, but, uh, boys soccer is going to the state final tomorrow. Uh, that game's at four P M. Um, and so we have organized a fan bus. I think right now it's two buses taking the kids down.
Yeah, right, two.
Um, and so trying to be flexible with folks getting down there safely, uh, and supporting the team. Um, yeah, and hoping for the best, wishing them luck. And coming home with the trophy, so.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have our five-year capital projects outlook.
Give me one second.
Sure. So, yeah, I think we might all, is anybody having the same issue or just me?
Anyone need to log in with your, your, uh, credentials for Google?
Yeah, I'm not doing that.
Yeah, that one is perfect. Um, so by your capital projects outlook, uh, just wanted to kind of walk you through this, uh, the presentation. If you can access it on your device, it's also on the screen. Um, I also have a spreadsheet for you there as well. Um, so just to kind of back up, back to our comprehensive plan, our strategic goal number four is to en- enhance infrastructure, um, and rejuvenating spaces, learning spaces, and I'm looking at our facilities. And so that's kind of the reason for this, this conversation. I wanted to show you a couple of projects that were recently completed. Some of these you, you might have seen before. Um, as well as some things that you have not seen. So this summer we did at Kelly Elementary, we did, uh, some resurfacing. All this asphalt is new, uh, as well as the playground surfacing, um, another angle there, um, showing that with the lines up there, uh, for basketball as well as, um, some numbers for when students are lining up. I think we've added that in two spots now. Correct. Um, and then I'm gonna give you that list of projects that, um, at each building as well. So things that could be done in the next five years. Um, classroom flooring is a need, um, at some point. Uh, we did a network upgrade at the middle school last year. Uh, Kelly would be due for that. That's something that we can actually use E rate, E rate funds for, uh, which would be a fifty percent, uh, discount. Uh, took some time to get that money back, but we would, we would get fifty percent back of that project. Uh, that just helps that internet, uh, work well over at Kelly. Uh, but that's replacing basically all wires and that's something we want to consider in the near future. Uh, you'll see casework and cabinetry, um, on multiple buildings. Um, that's in classrooms. It's, um, the cabinets that are in there, the sink and things like that. Um, they could use some refurbishment or some replacement, window treatments, um, blinds and things like that. Blinds like we have here in the D C I, uh, would be beneficial, um, at Kelly. Exterior lighting is, uh, the parking lot lights, um, as well as the wall pack lights that are on the building itself. A potential renovation of the nurses suite and the, the main office at Kelly could be done at, uh, in the next five years, um, and then adding some additional parking. We've, we've thought about some ways where we could add, um, and capture some additional spaces. And then roofing is also on there on the top list. Um, it lays out some roofing, uh, priorities.
What's driving the need for additional parking at Kelly?
Um, it is very full in the morning. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, Eric?
Yeah. Have you had, we have, I have quite a few, you know, check it out here.
Oh, okay.
I mean, field day, we're using high schools at the church. Parking lot, parking our fingers, no, you have been in two acres, staying outside of school drive, uh, parents pickup, our concerts, open houses, everything gets full, every space around the curb, the old floor parking. Um, any event, parking lot, it's a backer. Um, that's something, but so, we just bring folks here.
And on a daily basis for parent pickup, parents are parking, staffing is taking up the majority.
A lot of the time.
Right, right.
And there's little kids that are, it's.
So the thought is potentially to maybe even take some of the islands out to gain a couple more spaces. Uh, there is a big island there on the kind of the outer curve that could be, um, have some spaces on it. We kind of had some conversations about what that could potentially look like. And then finally on there is roofing. And then I did kind of color code this as well. The things that are in yellow on these bulleted points are potential grants that could be utilized for it or E rate for the network upgrade. Um, exterior lighting could potentially use P C C D funds because it focuses on safety. Roofing, they're likely in the budget is gonna be a school facility improvement grant again. Uh, our note got was that we got, it's gonna be in May. So that's probably helpful for this coming summer, but for the following summer. Um, so again, and then in green, we thought if it's a potential G D F project, I shared this with also with them. Um, it could be something that they could consider. Um, so that was on the list, but it was a little bit lower priority because it, that's kind of a little higher ticket item there. Um, over at Lindtown, I think, I think you already saw this image, but we did some changes at Lindtown, some classroom renovations. This used to be part of Kyle's office and a business office and is now a classroom. Um, we changed that space around, um, with some doors down there and, and it already had some cabinetry from previous, um, as well as adding some furniture and, uh, a whiteboard and a projector. Uh, this classroom here, um, got a new projector as well as new carpet. Also at Lindtown as of yesterday, um, we got new cafeteria tables that the board approved not too long ago. Um, and it really makes that space really look nice. Um, Eric said that when the students walked in yesterday, their just eyes were really, really big. They were just very impressed. Um, it's a big upgrade to that space. Uh, you can't see it in this picture, but the risers are back there as well. I, I didn't have a good photo of that. We'll put, put that on social media when I have that photo. Um, but got, got some good attention to this room. So, um, again, that's, that was a good addition to that space for sure. The ones we had there were about thirty years old, so. Um, things at Lindtown that, that to be considered, again, classroom flooring, casework and cabinetry, like I said, window treatments, exterior lighting there would be kind of swapping out the, the heads, um, of the, the light poles, um, for more energy efficient, um, and a brighter fixture. Um, there's a lesson room there that could use some soundproofing. That's also in green there as a potential G D F project. Um, adding some sound dampening panels in that space as well as on the ceiling tiles could help, um, not sound that's bleeding into a classroom. Moving around, uh, the office a little bit with some, um, changing that front office a little bit, not drastically, but new carpeting and things like that. Maybe changing how the desks are arranged, um, updating some signage and then potentially doing some upgrades more for inclusive pieces to our playground at Lindtown. Um, moving over to the middle school, here is the mural that was there. Again, you might have already seen this picture. Um, here is this updated space. Wanted to show that. Um, again, in the training room, upgrade is there. Um, some classroom flooring that was done this summer and then that, some extra spaces that we recaptured. Um, we've got the, the vestibule there and an office now that has a desk in there for officer shipment. And then roofing project that was done at this point, we did roofing the last two years. So all that's in green was done over the last two years. Um, and potentially, uh, new project that can be considered, um, for the summer, um, would be everything that is unfinished here, uh, section E, um, as well as the gym roof itself, as well as N would be included in a potential project for this summer, if we move forward with that. And then, uh, a few years later, we have, we would address the areas that are in blue. Uh, their warranty expires in twenty, uh, twenty-seven as well as twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-seven for those blue areas. And then that roof would be done for a good number of years. Questions on roofing before I move off this slide?
Are N and O different heights?
N and O, they are slightly different height, yeah. We, we thought about adding N to, um, this last project, but with the grant that we had, um, we had to give kind of a twenty-five percent match. And that's kind of why we took that off just to kind of be right at that, that amount. So that's why that kind of, kind of got pushed off. And then there's also some metal roofs, um, in the back. There's an awning as well as in the front, um, that would also get addressed. Um, potentially with that project, we could also, um, um, restore it with a different color and make it look.
Just gonna say that, yeah, it's red and that's weird.
It could look like, uh, the roof over at Lindtown, um, or a consistent green. So that could be addressed as well for that roof. Um, and we talked about, there's also some trim along the entire school that's kind of in that same color. We could include that as well. All right. Um, some other things near the middle school, um, on the, the J V Junior High Field, uh, you've already seen the picture maybe of the, the scoreboard. But we recently added a, a middle school concession stand there. It's in the, it's between the, the two bleachers that are there. We need to add electricity to that yet, but that can be used. We almost had it in, in, in ready to go for, for football. It came a week after that season. Uh, we didn't quite make that, uh, but we need to add electric to it yet, um, to allow to have some appliances in there. Um, and then we've added, uh, two of these bleachers, um, that are flanking the concession stand. And that's for J V football, junior high football, as well as, uh, junior high soccer would also be playing there. Um, at the middle school, um, some similar things that I mentioned, we, we did some painting and brick restoration kind of in that main hallway. Um, we did not do any yet, kind of on the, uh, the, the C shape or the U shape, um, the, the, where the classrooms are. So hallways there, classrooms there, uh, eventually could get painted. Those are listed on your sheet. Um, flooring, we've been taking that like kind of classroom by classroom. Casework and cabinetry, uh, is a bit dated there and some things that could be repaired as well as just replacement, window treatment, exterior lighting, same parking lot as before with Lindtown. We talked about a renovation to the band and orchestra room, acoustic paneling, more sound dampening type of thing. Um, I, on your sheet, you're gonna notice I kind of broke the locker room renovation into two phases. One being a fitness lab, which would carve a section of the locker room towards the fitness lab, moving the one office, um, a little bit, kind of, um, pulling that apart from the project and then a future project being the locker rooms themselves. Solar panels have been talked about here as well as at the high school. And then as, as I mentioned before, um, some future roofing needs at the middle school. Um, at Pauling, we, we recently did the turf and the track. We did some signage, a scoreboard there recently. Um, moving over to the high school, um, some signage that happened. We needed potentially do a repair to the other side of this marquee. Um, it's about, it's about ten years old. The other side, there is a section that is, um, we're trying to get fixed, but not sure we are able to do that at this point. Trying to get a second opinion on that. Um, it was cool coming in the, this evening to see the lights on at the soccer field and the tennis courts. Those pictures are there. Those are new ads. Other things at the high school, um, roadway lighting, which could be a P C C D grant. There's seven stanchions that we already have there. The light poles are needed there. So I put that as a high priority because there're, there's not lights there at all right now. It would be beneficial, um, for E grass there as we're leaving. Potentially we could repurpose some of our flex room spaces, use them in a different way. A solar panel or a solar panel lease could be thought about. As well as over time, I think the tail end of the five-year plan, you'll see in two phases, repaving the parking lot, the front and in the back. And so. The front and in the back and side parking lots.
Would you think about solar panels on just the land or like the parking lot, like where are you saying, not on the roof because the roof's not built for it, right?
Not on the roof. We have some there right now. We're thinking more taking a piece of our of our land in the back, kind of an area that's not really seen as much. We could lease that out. They kind of want a thirteen acre plot to be able to do that. And they would pay us for like a thirty year lease. I think that's the that was the number. Yeah.
That's better than we're doing with the farmer, right?
That's a lot more land and they could still farm the rest of the land. We still have we have other acres that could be farmed.
Opportunity if we do something like that to put a proper press country course. Because like right now, it's, you know, it's fine, but it's not really well maintained. It's got some weird elevation changes and it's a different it's a change of terrain. So if we do something like that, it'd be nice to consider.
We're looking at potentially adding some markers on on the course to kind of show kind of where turns are and things like that. So that's that is being talked about as well. We could also do purchase solar on our own. There's an upfront charge for that. There is a in the in that budget, there was twenty-five million for solar for schools. Again, the likelihood of getting that grant, it's it's possible, but we could apply for that. Part of that is getting an assessment and. I also marked that as green. GDF is interested potentially in being involved with potentially looking for grants for us on that as well. So we did put an application in for solar panels with GDF so they can explore that as well. Other things that are kind of district wide cafeteria equipment is we can use we can use things that are separate from capital projects to pay for that. But there are some refrigerators that need to be replaced, probably in the very near future. As well as warmers and things like that, that but again, that's coming out of a different fund. Boring things like boilers and water heaters, but also very important. Those are on the list under HVAC. You'll see that. Eventually, the turf field will need to get replaced. With a with a rough estimate there on your sheet. A mobile press box could be added to the to there as well. We just saw one. At the the previous game that at Northern High School had a very nice version of a mobile press box that would be elevated. And also provide storage for our sound system, which would be a nice addition. Security enhancements like adding fobs to classroom doors in this building. Continually having some funds aside for classroom furniture, specifically in the elementary and middle school. And there's some sidewalk repairs and asphalt that are also listed on that sheet. At Kelly, there are some sidewalks that need to be repaired as well as walking from Lindtown over to the middle school. There are some repairs that are needed. And then projectors and smart boards. We've been adding more and more smart boards to the high school over time. And then using projectors in the other buildings. And then possible long term ideas, not necessarily on the five year plan, but just for awareness, you know, we could consider some more space. An auditorium in between the middle school and Lindtown would be a nice addition. You could also add some potential classrooms into that. Potentially, you could convert our current turf field to include football. You could do a stadium down the road. We had a conversation with the YMCA about a pool complex and using land for that. Because they have some funds available for that. So that is a potential long term, much more planning needed, much more direction needed on that. But those are just things to be aware of down the road, even further out than five years, but just wanted to put them out there for conversation. Welcome any conversation or more discussion on anything that's in front of you or on the screen. Sure. So we've got smart boards. We probably have maybe two at the middle school, three at the middle school. And we probably have around seven at the high school and the smart boards are just like the TV style type smart boards. It's like more like it looks like more like a TV, whereas our projectors that we have in classrooms are more like that right there. They're all they all they're all interactive. Yes, yeah. Just the ones that are at the high school, it's a little bit brighter of an image because it's almost like a TV screen. They're both interactive, both can be where you're not necessarily tethered to your computer. But yeah, we're been moving more towards the smart boards as we bring in new ones.
But you have.
We have that style in every classroom. Yep, you got it. You got it. We don't have an example of what the smart boards, they're mounted. They look like big screen TVs, but they're interactive. But we're probably going to be looking out of our technology budget to purchase about five more in the near future. So but that wouldn't be out of capital projects. That would be most likely technology budget. Good question. Other questions? Thoughts? We also have on there, I'll just mention two before. With the surplus coming in there. What would be available? What would be in capital projects as a balance at the end? If those expenditures were made, just kind of a a rough estimate of what those would be. And so just wanted you to be aware of that. Also some GDF funding that is like capital campaigns. That money takes some time to come over to us because they're they kind of bring that over on a three or four year plan.
Thank you. All right, our next our first item for board action is to continue with the Finelli as our solicitor. Do I hear a motion to approve? Move by Ms. Hanos. Second by Ms. Kraus. To see him in person.
We can make that happen.
Many of us. Yeah.
We can make that happen.
Do you have any questions about the? Okay. We're ready to go.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Our next item is engagement with different council for special specialty services. And so do I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Moved by Dr. Mattis. Second by Ms. Kraus. Any questions or discussions? How often have we needed services like this? Not very, right?
So this is Christina Gallagher from Whistler Pearlstone. We I used her over the last two years for Title IX specifically. As I was learning the aspects of that policy about Title IX. Moving into the role at superintendent, she is very helpful. She focuses on policy and Title IX. And so it would be specifically a policy and still using PAT for the majority of solicitor type work. But I think this year, just as professional development for myself, as well as just learning on policies. From Montgomery County area where we we also model a lot of our policies after that that region as well. It's been very helpful to kind of connect with her and ask questions, but then also taking those to policy committee. We had a meeting recently and those those things are very helpful for myself to present.
Right, when you have a question, when you know it's coming from. Not just what we think, but how the law is actually interpreted is not.
Yeah, yeah, okay, understood.
No, so that that lawyer, I don't know her name to be honest. Will it, yes. They have a change of agreement there with Mr. Finelli. They have now they were together as like a joint service. Mr. Finelli also now offers special education services himself. So we can do special ed through him as well.
Is a special ed, I guess this is back to the last one, but. It said more for, I mean, there were special circumstances that we thought of more, but that wasn't. That's a special ed as well for the hundred and eight dollars per hour.
Is that litigation?
Yeah, that would.
I think it specifically lays out litigation and labor relation, but it doesn't say special ed. Is that also? I guess which rate would the special?
That's a that's a great question.
Because we had always made more for the special education.
Yeah, so it does say they're specialized. Yeah, specialized is litigation, labor relations and special education.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does say.
Good question though, yes.
And those rates went up a little bit from, but they haven't been changed for about, I think, eight years.
Like we just had somewhere special development or had been hired someone.
I I can ask that question.
Because I mean, it is such a specialized area.
I think he's always done it, but the other person in the firm had really like that.
Her focus.
He's always done it, I mean, somebody correctly, along, he's always done it. So he handled a lot of matters. He represents on tech as well. And all the matters that. I don't have any in terms.
I think there might be three Ls in the last name for our records, just so we have that archive document. Just a little misstep. With all of our, all of us have the same situation, okay. So that was on the previous one. On this one, we're we're voting now on four B. We're ready, I think.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons. Dr. Mattis.
Yes.
Mr. Fetter. Dr. Graham.
Yes.
Dr. Grant. Ms. Hanos. Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item is a job description revision for Board Secretary and Recording Secretary. And this is, we just, is this like an oversight thing? Because we had this before.
Yes. So we learned Kristen went to a conference recently and learned that. To be have have a stipend for Assistant Board Secretary, you need Recording Secretary tied to it as well. So we're adding that to the job description title. And then I also just went through the job description and made some edits as well. And so that is the reason for bringing it to the table.
More or less just cleanup.
It's more of a clerical nomenclature type of change.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Move by Ms. Kraus. Second by Ms. Lyons. This is just a job description. Any discretion or freshman? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any oppose? Okay. Next up, we have. Curricular frameworks.
Yes, so that's me again. So that's just some for information. I feel free to review those. A lot of those are work that we did the past school year with teachers. They were updating all of our curriculum frameworks to a new template, adding standards. And this is mainly focusing on middle school, kind of special areas like consumer science, BCIT. Music as well as I believe to high school curriculum frameworks, I believe chemistry and honors chemistry are on there as well. So review and then we'll bring them back to you for approval at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Board President's report on Sunday, no, it was Sunday. Right, Sunday when we had the GDF event. It's a very nice event. Kathy Moser was honored again. Some things that were talked about were that the GDF has been very active in providing. Resources for families who may find themselves in a food insecure. Situation right now. And so there's both the eat quasi endowment that Kristen is really has really headed up and championed. And it stands for something access table.
Everyone ensuring access to the table.
Yes, that's right, ensuring access to the table and lifting up Lewisburg. So both of those funds were utilized to purchase wise gift cards. For families to be able to purchase groceries. And we also talked about the GDF representatives shared their experience with their meeting when they held it at the middle school.
Yes.
And everyone understands the needs, right? Michael did an excellent job presenting. Gibson Noely obviously always does an excellent job representing. And I hope and Jimmy Chen is hilarious. So all in all, it was a it was a great event. And I think the it really felt like the whole community was on board with things. Did you Heather was there as well, did you have anything to add?
No, I thought it was also very enjoyable and yeah.
Yeah. Right. Also, you know. But I'll I'll keep my other stuff for comments.
Okay. All right, Superintendent's report. Principals, thank you for your comments. I appreciate. I know how engaged you are. I did lots of phone calls with all of you this week in in your in your offices. So thanks for the work that you do. Kyle, thanks you for the work today as we were working on the capital projects together. And Kristen has been fantastic working with as well, preparing all this board stuff. So I appreciate that. Also going to mention the GDF donor and volunteer reception. It was really cool seeing the highlights and how people were impacted. Gibson, who you guys have met before, spoke about his his Model UN trip. And we'll tell tell more about that in the near future. They did really well in that. And then Michael cracking some good jokes about the locker room and potentially raising support there, but really appreciate GDF's partnership. Last night, Eric and Brad and myself got to go to the Kelly Title One Family Literacy and Math Night. We had about eighteen families that joined us, which is about fifty people. They got to eat some pizza. The kids got to play some games after pizza. We took the parents to the library, gave an overview of Title One. Talked about our literacy services, our math services. And I want to just thank again Eric and Brad for joining me. Our literacy coach Hannah Erin Frake was there talking about literacy, our two reading specialists, Lindsay Yoder and Lindsay Brown were there. Connecting with parents, our math interventions, Mr. Kishel, thanking him, as well as Mrs. Kip Kier, our teacher. Great event. It's good to have, I remember being at my previous district and I have like two families there. Having eighteen families is is great. Two more things to add. Again, boy soccer team tomorrow state final. It's fantastic. Best of luck to the team and Coach Kettlewell. And I wanted to thank Heather for four years on the board. We appreciate your dedication to the board and the work you've done with the district. So thank you for that, Heather.
All right, next up we have for the committee report, has anyone had a meeting that we haven't had? No, right, okay. I I saw people coming out of policy committee the other day, but.
Did have policy, but we can update that.
Next time around. All right, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve? Move by Ms. Kraus. Second by Dr. Graham. Okay.
Dr. Jablonski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Lyons.
Yeah.
Dr. Mattis. Mr. Fetter. Dr. Graham. Dr. Grant. Ms. Hanos. Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I forgot to say with the revised personnel report. So yeah, everyone, I think. Thank you. All right, are there any citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items?
Sure enough.
Okay. Director's comment. We'll start down with Joe.
You always start down here. Yeah. So yeah, I want to say thank you to the principals for being here and hearing everything's going on in this busy time. Thank you to the Green Dragon Foundation. I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend the event this weekend, but it sounded really good. I I just want to use my minutes here to say for the benefit of anybody watching out there and for the benefit of us. A lot of important things happened in Harrisburg yesterday, finally. With not only the state budget being passed, which is obviously a good thing. But also changes to the school policy code of nineteen forty-nine. With the Senate bill three fifteen sponsored by our local friend and advocate Linda Schlebel Culver. And it's just, it's nice to see. Of course, it would have been nicer to do four months ago, but you know, to really see our legislators in Harrisburg working together and batting things back and forth. And and coming to, you know, to some changes in the in the school code. Some of that has to do, of course, with cyber charter reforms, both. Putting shifting some of the burden for residency requirements, wellness checks, things like that. Changing the the formula a little bit for the amount that a school district like us pay in by deducting for different things. But also issues like more funding for school safety, both physical and mental health. Site changes to teacher certifications. Strangely requiring that we accept cash at school events like sporting events. Can you tell I read the hundred and forty page bill today? And so anyway, I just I just think it's very important and we should take a minute to thank and shout out and recognize our. Our legislators working on our behalf to see where things need updated and updating. So that's how I wanted to use my time. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, thank you to all the principals. Appreciate your hard work. Yeah. Thank you to all the principals. Appreciate your, um, hard work and getting the kids. Excited about different things. I shout out to Windtown and Eric and Kelly for Peyton came home and talked non-stop about the Veterans Day event, uh, and the fact that she got to eat M R Es. And they were awful, but they, but she tried them. So, um, so thank you. Uh, thank you for that. Yeah. And they, um, thanks to Vince and Kyle and Kristen for getting us set up here tonight for all the information. Um, we've got work ahead of us. And, uh, to G D F, yeah, I, I apologize. I missed over the weekend. I thought maybe I could make it, but it was, uh, beyond my reach. So, thanks for all the good work that they're doing.
Um, I want to do a thank you to G D F for, um, what you were just talking about, Erin, but I think a lot of times, um, there's a, sometimes back and forth about, you know, school is school and that's where people learn. But, uh, the way they came together to give out to the community with the, um, hold up in SNAP benefits, I think is really fantastic. And I think that's something that our community does, um, that they come together for one another. So I think that was really wonderful. I've heard people say how much they've appreciated it. Um, and the little part too, that I think sometimes people don't realize is the stuff that is given out is things that people want. Cause a lot of times when we collect things just as society for people in need, it's like stuff we don't want, which is then really crappy. Um, so I think we do a really good job of making sure that's not what we're giving people. So that people are in need already don't feel like they are less deserving. So I just think that that was a really wonderful thing and to kind of kudos that again. Um, the Veterans Day, um, thing was amazing. My husband went to it, who barely goes to any of that type of stuff, not in a negative way to my husband. But, um, he very much enjoyed being a veteran there. And so I think to be able to have him as engaged as he was with the activity really said a lot. And I know that the kids loved it. Um, and I think that's really, which, oh, and I know I had something else and Heather will miss you on the board. It was great serving with you. It was great running with you. So let me see.
Yeah, I wanted to do another thanks for the capital projects list. Like I, someone who's organized, I really appreciate the thought that went into this and the effort. Like it definitely takes a lot of effort and planning to think through all this. Um, and I know when I look at it and, you know, what comes to mind is not the sexy projects, right? It's like the roofs and the boilers and it's so good to lay it out this way and be like, yeah, we have these dreams about these great things we could do that are really flashy. But it's like, wait a minute, like our, our kids need roofs and floors and windows. And so it's, so I just appreciate the effort to bring that together. Yeah. Yeah. Thanks, Heather. It's been nice sitting next to you.
Heather's going to get the last word, Jordan.
I don't think I have anything else to add.
Okay. Uh, Kristen?
Yeah. Um, Heather, thank you so much for doing this for the past four years. Um, I have enjoyed getting to know you um, and working with you. And thank you, um, for everything you've done. You always have very thoughtful and meaningful comments. Some, there's those of us who talk a lot and there're those of us that don't. And you might not always talk a lot, but when you do speak, it is always something that is very important and very on point. And as someone who probably talks too much, I really appreciate you. So thank you for that. Um, I just, I had to point something out from the soccer game the other night and like the game was amazing. And thank you Channel Eight for those of us who couldn't go to the game to watch it. Um, the goal was incredible, but the best part of the game was at the very end, when the gore was gold and the team all got together. And then they sprinted to the corner where the student section had jumped down and run out to the fence. And they were all hugging their, their friends and their pals. And I just, I'm not going to cry. Um, but I, as someone who goes to things, cause I have three kids in this district, so I've had a lot of, of events. I'm always impressed in how our students support each other. The kids that go to the musical to watch their musical friends and the kids who, when there's a swimmer in the state championship for literally only twenty-three seconds. And we're getting carfuls of kids out of the high school to go watch them at Bucknell. And no matter where it is or what the activity is, there's always other students there who aren't necessarily part of that cheering really, really loud. Um, and I think, again, we talk about it all the time, but the culture here is special, that that is, that is so, that they support each other so much. So thank you to all of you and all of the teachers and staff who, um, facilitate that every day.
Want to add anything?
Who knows, Joe, above and beyond.
I know.
Hundred and eighteen. That's later text.
Don't feel like you only get credit for one hundred and eighteen. We're gonna not say.
Still. That ridiculous, Martin? Nor do I plan to. It's a good thing I didn't read it. That'd have been. No. Uh, Heather, I can't believe it's been four years.
I know, I know.
Time flies when we're having fun. I'll, I'll miss our conversations and chatting and catching up with our, what our kids are doing and, and see what yours is doing right now. Being the good son sitting out there, listening to us.
Yeah, currently.
Yeah.
That's nice to see. It's been, it's been a pleasure.
I, yeah, I only have two comments. The first one is I want all the other administrators to know, I made fun of Michael in the most flattering way the other day. And that is because I said he wasn't exceptional. He was what Kathy Moser hires, right? I said, all of our administrators are this funny and this talented and care this much about kids. And everyone in the room agreed. Everyone in the room knew what I was talking about. Kathy was almost crying. And I thought, people, people are fully in support of you all. I mean, I wish you could have seen all the faces in the room, right? And then wouldn't you agree, right? It was really evident. And so that was just lovely. Yeah. Kristin, yeah, Kathy was crying. Kristen cries. Everyone cries. Um, and Heather, as I, as I wrote to you, um, this is a lot of time and it's a lot of thought. I don't think that people out in the public realize the burden that we take back when we hear something in executive session that we think about and we send really thoughtful questions and emails and say, what about this scenario? Or what are we doing about this? And I think I, I echo what Kristen was saying. Yeah, we, we need to think about things, you know, in, from multiple perspectives. I think you've been really good about that. I also know that you're going to be, you know, as of tomorrow, probably volunteering for something else. Like I know you're, you know, however your role may shift, it's always going to be in some community-facing way. I, I see that. So, you know, it's like goodbye, but you're going to be really nearby. So thank you so much. And, uh, but you're up?
Yeah, I'll keep it as short as I can. I, I do want to say thank you to everyone. Um, I was sharing with my family this evening that it's kind of sad. Um, you know, my mom's health is in decline, so I made the tough decision to not run again. I think she's going to be meeting me in the next couple of years. Um, but my father was a public school teacher. So I think I came this gravitating towards schools and students is something I've, I've just come by honestly. Thinking about the things that we have power over, which actually, as a school board, is actually not a whole lot. I mean, we get to decide how to spend money, but we are, um, hurt, we have the purview, I mean, exec session. We have the privilege of knowing a lot. I mean, I, I feel like we have the privilege of knowing just about everything there is to know of, uh, about what is happening in the district and the schools and with students. And that's a huge privilege, just knowing that information. And then also realizing that all of you spend every day trying to figure it out. You know, the administrators, the teachers, how can we help this student who's in trouble? Or how can we make this learning process go better? Or how can we make this situation safer for students? So if that's for me, has been a huge takeaway, just awe inspiring to think about the complexity and the challenge and the beauty of, of running this system. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
With that, uh, do we only get, do you want to get a picture while you're still in the seat or anything with that?
No, no, I'm, I'm not picturing.
Okay. All right. I will take a motion to adjourn. I moved by Dr. Graham, second by Ms. Kraus. All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned.